Okay, good afternoon. The time is now 12:06 PM and the State Board of Education will reconvene the interviews for the Superintendent of Public Instruction for the state of Michigan. The next item on today's agenda is an interview with Dr. Judy Walton. And we'll welcome Dr. Walton to the table. Hello.
Hi, thank you for having me back.
Thanks for joining us again. And we're going to just go over some instructions mainly for the listening audience. Board members, again, we will go around and we will be able to ask the questions that each of us as individuals have come up with. Let's try not to be repetitive. We did good this morning. And we will now hear a 10-minute presentation from Dr. Walton. And just so that the listening audience is aware, each of our finalists was asked to prepare and present a short response to the following. Given the current educational and political context in Michigan, share your plan to enter the superintendent role. We want to learn how you will acquire a clear and informed understanding of the pressing issues the department faces and how you will address Michigan's current statewide challenges. And then following that 10-minute presentation, we will begin our round of questions. So turning it over to you.
Thank you. Just want to acknowledge that my board president, Kendra Durga, is back today also with her father, Kent Stahl, who is on the Board of Education in McBain. And about a year ago, Kendra gifted me a shirt that says, "Because Kids." And I wore it today because if there's one thing that can tell you my why, it's because kids. So, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for having me back. And so, to tie into some things that I shared with you last week, this really is a vision of bolstering every individual child's future story, whatever that may be. And we need to, as I said last week, make sure that the field is as broad as possible for every single child. And that even when kids make mistakes along the way, we need to make sure that we keep all options on the table for them. So, again, Dr. Pugh, you just stated this out loud, but I just wanted to just frame for everybody, obviously, what the presentation is going to be about in terms of just answering those questions. When I saw that there was 10 minutes for that, I kind of laughed because I was like, well, that sounds more like a three-day conference than a 10-minute presentation. But I will get through it in 10 minutes. But just to frame those pieces for us. So, about acquiring a clear and informed understanding, the bullet points on the left I took from the leadership profile piece that HYA did when interviewing MDE staff. Now, obviously, not everyone was interviewed, not everyone's voice was heard, but I felt like it's a really good starting point for the conversations to begin. And each one of those bullet points is a big discussion. It is a big issue or issues. But I do think it really is about building relationships with people, one by one or in small groups, through listening fully and reflectively. I have in quotes there, "witness the struggle," because I think it's really important to not presume that I understand anything, or even if I've talked to one person in MDE that I understand what other people in MDE may be feeling. It's about each individual person and the strengths they bring and also the challenges they're facing. And that's what I mean about witnessing the struggle. I am a leader who trusts first. You don't have to earn my trust. I grant trust from the beginning because I think that's the best way to lead. And so, now, if you break the trust, we're going to have some different conversations along the way to rebuild it. But you don't have to earn my trust. And I want to make sure that everyone in MDE also understands that, that I trust first. You may not come from a place in your life where you're capable of doing that, but I will always trust first. And I will hold their experiences and the revelations they make with care because everybody's experience is valuable. And again, because I'm going to trust them and I want them to trust me. And I also am going to be open, transparent, and respectful because it's incredibly important to honor the history of MDE and to honor the hard work that everyone does every single day. Even if the board and the department decide to make changes that fundamentally change something, it does not mean that what happened before was pointless or not good work. And so, in all of the innovation work that I've been a part of, especially as the Chief Innovation Officer in Forest Hills, that was really important. It was to help people understand that what came before wasn't bad or wrong. It's just that we need to do things differently now. And I think I said to you last week about leading with the why, right? And that we think about, I usually use these three frames, the what, why, and how, as we move groups through. And then I just put some sentence structure, sentence stems. I think, even though I'm a social studies teacher, I'm kind of a closet ELA teacher, so I like the sentence stems. Just about silence can be very powerful when listening with people. And to really use questioning to push their thinking, not to say like, well, why would you do something like that, right? Which can sound very off-putting to people. But the questioning that I've been trained to use and that I do use is really just to probe and to get them to tell me their story without any judgment. And again, those five big issues, they're really big. I think also that on those conversations, meeting with the leadership team, with individuals to engage in conversations, I always in those meetings, excuse me, use working agreements or norms so that we're coming from a place of safety with people as we meet. Sometimes in larger groups, a protocol for conversations to make sure that all voices are heard. I want to understand the needs and perceptions of the department and the people that work here while I'm gathering data, trying to figure out patterns and things. I also think I will need to deploy some type of anonymous survey or other tool because there are still going to be people that are, for a variety of reasons, not going to want to share, frankly, right away. And so I think it's important for their voice to be heard as well. Facing the challenges ahead, I have six of them. And again, part of that was driven by what the leadership profile report said, as HYA met with a variety of groups around the state and then just my own experiences. But to really engage, actively engage with policyholders at both the federal and the state level to support legislation that helps all students succeed, especially when we're looking at that number one there about needing consistent, meeting those funding inequities and capacity constraints. I think it's also about becoming, speaking in plain language with people, to be clear, to be outcomes-based in our accountability, to maintain strong communication channels with legislators, with the governor's office, and with other state agencies, and to really continue to advocate for MDE's autonomy and to highlight their expertise in the field of education. I think when we look at number two, it really is about fostering a culture of equity where all feel valued, respected, and empowered to succeed. I'm not sure that all of our students and families today in our state do feel that for a variety of reasons again. So I think it's going to be really important to meet those critical needs and coming from a lens of equity on that. At the back of the presentation, and I'm sure someone's going to ask me a literacy piece at some point during this, and so I'll probably refer to it then, but there's a theory of change around how we promote good literacy work to meet the critical needs of our kids. And it's one that we're currently using in our district. And so I'll probably, depending on the questions, talk about that when I have a little bit more time, but it's stapled to the very back of the piece. I think also for number three, meeting the critical needs of our educators, it's about working with our legislature around earmarking some amounts directly for teachers without impacting students. About five or seven years ago, I remember reading that the state of Hawaii was earmarking certain, I don't think they used the word bonuses, but that's probably the way most of us would understand it, for people who came to the state and were qualified special ed educators because they had a dearth of special ed educators there. And so I think we need to look at the areas where we don't have enough teachers in certain areas and really start looking at, how do we incentivize either people to get that licensure or to attract people from other states to come here? And to really, and I will tell you for both students and educators, something I want to do, I want to set aside two days every month for eight months across the school year. I want to go shadow a student and I want to fill in for a teacher. I want to shadow a student. I've done that multiple times. I've run that program multiple times. Nothing better to learn what a student's day is like and their life is like. MESA has eight regions around the state. It's a perfect distribution now to say, over eight months, one student in each region to start with, one teacher in each region to start with. I want to get in and teach in schools one day a month to see what they're experiencing. So, another way to build that empathy and to really figure it out. And then, I know I'm running out of time, sorry, just on the last page there, just to summarize, I really want to make sure that we're actively building relationships with key stakeholders, as I said, be visible and engage, to ensure there's regular channels of communication along the way. And again, last but not least, to reclaim the narrative around public education and to really show the great things that we're doing. And to admit if we have a failure, because that's important to say, what did I learn from that? We tell kids all the time, it's okay to fail. But is it really? We have to walk that walk. And just last, I'll leave you with this. Two questions we should always be asking ourselves. How do we best identify what skills today's preschoolers may need when they graduate and how we're going to make those adjustments over time? And what sort of environments are most likely to succeed in growing those future stories? Sorry if I spoke really fast.
Thank you, Dr. Walton. Thank you for this presentation. And I, again, will start with the first question. You talked about building relationships and you've talked before and now about where your leadership has taken place, which much of that leadership has been in smaller rural settings like Harrison, where you've introduced creative initiatives such as future stories. Now, as a state superintendent, you'd be leading Michigan's 1.4 million students across very diverse contexts, from rural to large urban districts. You, again, talked about relationships that you will build. How do you, with stakeholders, how do you see your experiences preparing you for that broader role? And how would you build on what you've learned in the smaller district to serve students statewide and expeditiously?
Thank you. So, I think it's a couple of different pieces there. I think I'd go back to the 10 or 12 years that I spent as a trial attorney because I think those skills are essential, they were essential to being a good teacher in some ways and to being a good leader. I used to tell people that here, in my law career, I had to convince a jury that what I had to say was important and to be persuasive and to be clear and explain some really complex things in very understandable language. That same thing happened when I went into the classroom, right? I had to convince 30 high school kids that this is something they should want to know and help them embed it into deeper memory. I spent about 20 years in Forest Hills Public Schools. So, the majority of my teaching career was in a large district in a variety of roles. I've been in all levels. I spent a semester as a principal intern at an elementary school. I taught at the high school level and I was a principal at the middle school level. I was also in the central office role, first as an instructional coach and then as the Chief Innovation Officer. So I've experienced a lot of things within districts that many other people have not. I've been very fortunate to be at all of those places. I would also say that the three years I've spent in Harrison have been life-changing and rewarding and even deciding to apply for this job was very difficult because I love it there so much. The difference between our large districts and our small and rural districts in many ways are night and day. So I'm very thankful for that experience. Our small and rules are the majority of our districts, even though they don't hold the majority of our kids. And so, I think I bring an understanding that many other, or perhaps no other candidate has for the breadth of what goes on in a school district, both large and small, and then what might happen across the state. We tell kids all the time, we want their skills to be portable, right? Because we can't necessarily envision five years from now, what will be the hot job or the hot area to go in. My skills are portable as well, right? The skills I have as a lawyer, the training I've had in adaptive teaching, cognitive coaching, cultural intelligence, all of the different pieces I have, I bring them with me. I bring every experience with me. And yes, to think about, it's 1.4 million children, could be very and is very daunting at times, but anywhere I've been, I've been successful building teams, whether it's with 400 teachers in Forest Hills or 85 teachers in Harrison. I've lived in multiple parts of the state. I grew up in the Detroit area, so I'm very familiar with that. Went to junior high and high school in the city of Detroit. I've lived in Ann Arbor, Lansing, most of my adult life in Grand Rapids. Now in, depending on who you ask, either mid-Michigan or up north, and that's a debate you don't want to get into where it starts. And so, I think that breadth of experience makes me realize, there's a lot of things I still don't know. And there's a lot of people's stories I still don't know. And I think that's why I say I trust first and I listen first. But I can scale this up. I can scale the skills up and I can, I'm not afraid to lead a large department and to impact that many kids because it's what has to happen for our future stories to move forward.
Thank you.
You touched a little bit on disparities in resources, resource allocation. And I think we can all agree that there are significant funding disparities between and among districts across the state. We also have on top of that districts facing declining enrollment, aging infrastructure. And how would you support all districts without imposing a one-size-fits-all solution?
Yeah, I don't, you know, and I'm not big on the one-size-fits-all, to be honest with you. I think I said this last week, the only thing standardized in our schools is the testing. It's not our kids, it's not our families, it's not our teaching corps. We love that rich diversity that everybody brings to the table. I think that with good intent, the current system, the way it's set up, and obviously Proposal A in the 90s really changed funding fundamentally here in Michigan, but there are still those disparities because you can go for bonds, for example, for infrastructure. But depending on the value in your community, I mean, you could ask for 20 mills and it's still not going to raise enough funds to do what you need to do, right? We're very lucky in Harrison, we're going for a bond this fall. Our mill rate right now is 3.3, is very low compared to the area, thankfully, because we have a lot of resort second homes in our area. If you've ever been to Harrison, the big tagline is 20 lakes in 20 minutes. And so, we're fortunate to have that. But again, we're going for safety and security pieces that we want to upgrade, right? No Taj Mahal, nothing like that. That's still going to be a haul for our voters to say, even though you're not raising the mills because we're going to keep it the same, at some point, some of those mills would come down. And so, ultimately, I would pay less taxes if I don't vote yes on this. And in an area that has a lot of poverty and you're worried about buying food for your kids, those are struggles that districts face. And so, I think when we did the infrastructure study, what was it, about two years ago, I feel like, was when the infrastructure study came through, there was a lot of excitement in the beginning. You know, we spent a lot of time with our maintenance people filling everything out. We're lucky, we have fairly new buildings. But I think kids who are going to school in schools where the gym floor is warped and you can't play a sport, for example, or things are leaking and things like that, we haven't found a good solution yet for that because the local taxpayers can only bear so much. There's a lot of talk about consolidation, right? And there were some incentives to consolidate, which on paper, I think, works. But when you think about the values and the importance of the schools in any given area, to ask schools to consolidate and merge for financial reasons, all sound, like I said, it seems great on paper. It is so hard for a community to consider that. It feels like giving up who you are. I think about how in the early 1900s, how mandatory high school was sold to communities. It was sold to communities as a way to have a hub of your community, to have your own sports teams in your community, somebody you could root for. I mean, literally, if you look back at the history, that's what it was about. Because they had to figure out a way to sell it past eighth grade. And so with consolidation, after we've built for more than a century of, this is my town, this is my team, to say, well, you're going to merge with the neighboring school district because it makes more financial sense and it's a better use of buildings, it doesn't take into account all of that emotion that people in the community have. And so again, that's something that I think looks good on paper, but is, would be very hard to pull off, would take a lot for the area superintendents to be able to work with their community around all of those feelings, you know, whose mascot are we going to use? And I mean, that might sound silly, but those are very important things. Whose colors are we going to use, right? All of those things that define a community. And so, I don't know that I have an easy answer for you. I will say we're all feeling the result of the declining enrollment, right, across our state. Generally in our state, it's a lower amount than it was and across many districts, it's lower. I know we're down about 25 from where we would like to be. And that causes a lot of angst around our budget because 25 kids is a lot of kids. You hate to lose any kid. So I think we need to really think about, perhaps, a more creative way to think about how we cure some of those infrastructure problems. Is there an opportunity to potentially partner with the private sector around some of that in terms of lowering costs to do certain things? And so, it's definitely a conundrum.
Thank you.
To me, as you know, the political landscape around education in our state is both complicated and complex. Perhaps the most important characteristic for an educational leader is courage. The courage to stand up for what one thinks is right when it comes to what's best for kids, teachers, and families. What would you do if the governor, this one or her successor, unless that a year and a half, or the legislature, or even a superintendent, or a school board in a local school district takes an education position different from that of you as the state superintendent and the state Board of Education? Easy question.
So, it actually initially, when you used the word courage, made me think about a conference that I attended in February with superintendents from across the country. It was hosted by Deloitte in Dallas, Texas. And it was actually called Super Courageous. And they run courageous conferences for principals and other administrators. And this was the first one they had done for superintendents across the country, which is why they called it Super Courageous. And there were 200 or so, some of us from, not every state, but a majority of the states. And, you know, I was sitting there at one point, I had an assistant superintendent from Clark County, Nevada, which has about 300,000 students in it. And on my right was a young superintendent from Northern California, whose most of her district were on tribal lands, and she had about 60 kids K-12, right? So, we're sitting at a table together. There were probably maybe 10 or 12 superintendents from Michigan at this, from what I best remember. But those were some of the things that we really tackled. One of the things that we had to do going to this conference was, we had to bring a challenge with us, a challenge that we were facing. And we used each other over the course of a Friday, Saturday, and part of a Sunday to get feedback on how we were going to approach this challenge and to collectively come together to say, what can we do? The interesting thing, the guy with 300,000 students, the young woman with 60, and me sitting in the middle, many of our challenges were very similar, was just scale, right? But many of our challenges, how do we connect with our communities, right? Whether they're 60 or 300,000, how do we connect with our communities? How do we build trust? The woman sitting next to me here on the tribal lands, lots of distrust historically, right? No matter what she wants to do, lots of distrust. This district's so big, how do you even begin to think about building trust in a district of 300,000 students? I say all of that because it is both complicated, which to me suggests some linear answers, but complex. Whenever I hear the word complex, I think about an amoeba, right? I push here and something really weird happens over here, those unintended consequences. But I think if somebody takes a position that is now not our position, I think the first thing to do is to listen to the why. But then I think the other important piece is to stand in our truth. To stand in our truth about what we know is best for kids. We can disagree with other people. We will always disagree with other people, right? But I think we have to stand in that truth. And as long as we're clear in our why, well, you can put your head on the pillow at night and go to sleep. Okay? And so, I think courage is something that you accumulate over time, right? As you kind of stand up to something. I remember the first law firm I worked in, the firm was going to take a country club as a client because they were being pushed to take female members on their own, not as a spouse. And the country club didn't want to do that. And so we were going to represent the country club. And I was, in my first year or two there, and I went into a partner's office and I said, if we take this case, I'm not going to be able to work here any longer. And then I went back to my office and I was like, oh my God, I just quit my job, I just quit my job, you know? And I was the primary wage earner in our family, right? Ultimately, somebody came back to me at the end of the day and said, we're not going to take the case, right? It's not because they didn't want to lose me, but I think they, I hope that they thought about that. So I think your life is built on those courageous moments where, let me tell you, I felt like throwing up after I did that. But I knew, but I knew I couldn't be somewhere that didn't have those core values and things like that. So I just share that story as one example of how that courage is built over time. The next time I had to take a stand, it was a little bit easier, right? Because I already thought I had, like, financially ruined my family anyway, so.
Thank you.
So, under goal number five, which is increase the percentage of students who graduate from high school. How would you approach the issue of our special education students not graduating at a rate that is acceptable here in Michigan? What strategies would you implement to ensure improved special education graduation rates?
Thank you for that. You know, it's something as a parent that obviously I had to think about because for Andrew, if I wanted him to continue to have services till age 26, he couldn't get a diploma. And so, I think that's a conundrum for some families. Whether students are going to be on the diploma track or they're going to be on, some people, certificate of completion, whatever you might want to call it. It was very important to Andrew's father that he, who tangentially suddenly passed away right before Andrew started ninth grade, that he get a diploma. And so, that really pushed me. But I don't know if I hadn't been working in the school, if we would have been able to make that happen because I really pushed for things that maybe a lot of families wouldn't necessarily know about. So I think, again, it's coming back to that clear communication around options. I remember, it was just four years ago that I sat in a meeting where we listened to somebody from MDE, and I'm sorry, I don't remember who, meet with people in Kent County, principals in Kent County, around more use of the personal curriculum for students with IEPs. And, and I remember thinking like, I did that with Andrew, but of course, I knew to ask for that, right? And so again, how do we push more of that around the PCs? I think the PCs need to be expanded as well. So I think it's letting parents know that. One of the things I did as a parent is I said, can we just do these classes pass/fail? Right? That's a pretty darn low bar, right? I don't care, we're not going to be applying to Michigan, all right, or Michigan State. So if I want them to graduate, can we just go pass/fail on some things? Because it doesn't matter to me what his GPA is, right? So I think that's another way to think about it is, what are all the options that we already have that people don't know enough about around special ed? And then I think also the work-based opportunities could really be important too because it serves dual purposes, or multi-purposes, actually. To say to students who might have IEPs that are beyond something like perhaps, you know, a reading difficulty or something, not that that's to be poo-pooed, but something that really gets in the way of doing a job, or living on your own, or all of those other things. I think we need to expand work-based opportunities and how we give credit for that in high school, not just for kids with IEPs, I think for a lot of different kids. And there's some barriers to that, transportation, making connections in the business community, but not insurmountable. So I think that those are important pieces too. But I do think families, for kids that could go either way, are in a real conundrum about, do I want the services to stop if they get a diploma, or do I want them to continue? Because I'll be honest with you, there were a couple of times after graduation, I thought to myself, man, I shouldn't have done that because he needs some services now, and I'm not sure how to get them for him. So I mean, I think that's just the honest conundrum our special ed parents feel.
Okay. 823 districts, 56 ISDs, RESAs. Each of those organizations serve their communities, large and small, along with those that are members of the department, legislators, executive branch members, professional organizations. We know that while each of us want what's best for each child in the state of Michigan to experience success, we also believe there are certain laws, strategies, structures that must be in place in order for that to happen. You will find statewide varying views, core values, and most importantly, experience and knowledge. Your experience will be viewed as limited, both in the size of your current district and the diversity you've encountered over the years. I am concerned about your ability to garner the respect that you're going to need with not only those audiences, you know, just keep adding to them, but those are some examples of the audiences that you work with very closely. So that they will trust you to call upon your guidance. And in certain instances, you may have to make decisions that they're not necessarily going to agree with, but you got to move on from there also because that's what we do. So if you could share with me any experiences you've had or what your thoughts are on that, please.
Sure, and I appreciate the question. You know, interestingly, or maybe ironically, when I was going from Forest Hills to Harrison, there was a big concern in that community that I wasn't from there, that I'd been in a big district. I didn't know what it, I didn't know what it felt like or looked like to be in that kind of a small setting. That was probably the biggest question about me coming in. Now thankfully, there was also an impetus for change, for someone from not the normal track to come in. And it was a point in time where the board really felt like we, our infrastructure's good, all of these other pieces are good, we have got to turn our lens to teaching and learning. And so I believe that that's what ultimately won the board over for me going there. Because there was a lot of, I've had people come up to me since saying like, I wasn't sure about you, you know, because you're not from here, right, kind of a thing. So now you take that and you flip it the other way, and now it's saying, how are you going to do that in reverse almost, right, across this big state that we had? I would tell you that, I hesitate because I don't want it to come out the wrong way. The high school I went to, let me back up. So I grew up in the suburbs of Detroit through grade six. We lived in Clausen. And between sixth and seventh grade, when I was at Girl Scout camp, I came home and my mom said, we're moving. I bought a house in Detroit. Okay, great, right? So we moved into the city and we were at like the Seven Mile, Liverance, Sherwood Forest area. And again, I went to Catholic school, except for kindergarten. So, but our neighborhood was probably about 50% African-American and about 50% white in that area. It was also about, at that time, my impression might not be correct, but I felt like it was about 50/50 Jewish and Catholic as well at that point in time. Not sure if that's accurate, that's the way it felt. And so for the first time, I had gone, trust me, Clausen at that point was as white as you could get, okay? And so go in, and maybe it was naivete, right? We go to JZU, I do seventh and eighth grade in JZU. And then I go to Immaculata High School, which is now part of the Mary Grove Conservancy in the city. When I went to Immaculata, there were three, by the time I graduated, three white students remaining, including myself. Lot of white flight out of the city at that point in time. If you had gone to grade school and middle school at JZU, most of the young women that continued, their parents sent them to Marion. They didn't stay in the city. I have a lot of thoughts about that, but I'll leave that be right there. So I think growing up in that environment, especially in junior high and high school, really shaped and molded me about how I feel about diversity and people, whether it be based on color, whether it be based on religion, whether it be based on SES, whether it be based on region or anything like that, really shaped me. It's why when I got to Grand Rapids as a young lawyer, I was part of a diversity committee that Pat Miles, if any of you are familiar with Pat, is a lawyer in Grand Rapids. Pat and I co-chaired that committee as young lawyers. We had a lot less gray back then. Because what we found in that area was the law profession in Grand Rapids at that point was very white and very male. And the larger firms in Grand Rapids who also had satellite, or who were satellites of Detroit firms were having a hard time recruiting law school candidates. They could get them in for a summer internship, but they couldn't get them to move to Grand Rapids. Because again, not enough people that look like me, not enough people. And so Pat and I did a lot of work around that to increase both female and people of color representation in the Grand Rapids bar. It also brought me to meeting with some people around, who were very involved in the Institutes for the Healing of Racism. It was an initiative that Bob Woodruff, who was the owner of DNW Grocery Stores, who have now been bought out, really did. Some of the groups were faith-based, some were not. We really sat down and had honest, citywide conversations around racism, around differences and things like that. I ended up facilitating, co-facilitating some of them with a dear friend. And, and so I say that to say that everywhere that I've been, I guess I learned first and I listened first. And I recognize that my experience is not everybody else's experience. And so I think change comes through those conversations. I also know that people are going to disagree with me across time. And I guess I've always been able to garner respect because my word is my bond. And because I will trust first, because I will say when I've made a mistake. I will apologize if something has not gone right. Anyone that knows me knows that they can count on me. And so I think even in the work that I've done in the small and rural advocacy group has been impactful. I've chosen to go that route in the last few years, not to do a lot with MAS, to do more in that piece because that's my focus right now. I'm not a known quantity necessarily, but I see that as a strength, not a weakness.
Thank you.
Before I ask my question, can you expound on Nikki Snyder's question? As far as graduation rates, what are your experiences or strategies that you would use to meet the challenges for foster youth and for closing the achievement gap?
Yeah, so I think it was Mr. McMillan that asked me the question last week about our foster kids coming in and the, and so I've been reflecting on that too, about how we go about finding, when we can't find a transcript necessarily, or we can't do those things. And to really think about, there's, there's ways right now in the law that we've developed to help kids advance, to get credit in different ways, right? You can test out of a class. If you're a heritage or native speaker of a language, you may be able to get a certificate and not sit in Spanish one and two for two years when you already speak the language. So I was thinking about, how do we take some of those things that are already in place? For example, to help someone that's already taken courses, to say, if we can't track down a transcript, how can we figure out if you possess enough of that? And it's hard because kids don't always retain everything, so it's not like you can just sit there and test them. But to come up with a way to say, what we've been able to piece together about where you were and when you were there, and in just speaking with you, you know, we believe that you have achieved these courses or things. Or does there even need to be some sort of, I don't know if waiver's the right word, but some acknowledgement of, like in a local district, we have, we have requirements beyond the MMC, right? And I have the ability as a superintendent to waive those, right? To say, what the state of Michigan says is you need these credits. And so we're, and so we do that with kids who are really struggling in school, who may have had a child during their schooling, right? So there's a lot of situations where we're already being flexible. And so I've been thinking about, how do we do that for our foster kids? And again, I think that went to thinking about, more about the special ed. But I would say about graduation rates in particular, and luckily, we've been able to raise ours, that issue of absenteeism is so huge, right? And for our foster kids, like it likely was not their fault, right? And so, but I think about the absenteeism and specifically about being that big barrier to graduation for so many kids, too many kids. And, you know, the approach we've taken, and we're small, so it's a little bit easier, right? I say, if you've met one kid with an absentee issue, you've met one kid with an absentee issue, right? Because it's so complex. We've got kids who have to take care of siblings while parents go to work, right? We've got kids who are so disengaged from what we're doing in school, they do not care. And, and I think that whole issue of student engagement is such a big part of that. One of the things in our student voice work, I don't want to go too far off topic for you, but.
Yeah, because too, I still have to ask the question, but closing the achievement gap.
Yeah, so I think it's, it's about really honing in on those priority skills and standards, that knowledge that we know all kids need to have. And I might tick some teachers off when I say this, but in some ways, we have to get rid of some of the fluff. It's not about what I love to teach, it's about what you need to learn, so.
Thank you.
I apologize.
No worries. MDE believes a critical component of a well-rounded public education includes teaching comprehensive history and diverse classroom libraries. One of the things that I've been fighting for as a board member is African-American AP. Well, I said that last time too, multiple things. Comprehensive history is something I support, ethnic studies. And I believe that we do not teach accurate history in most of our classrooms. In our local-controlled state, how would you ensure consistency in educational quality while honoring local decision-making? And would you be supportive of us revamping the Michigan merit curriculum when it comes to history?
So I'll start with the last verse. I'd be in favor of really looking at revamping it, not just for history, but for, for other pieces as well. I'm a history teacher, so, you know, I also taught a lot of AP classes. And I know that African-American, I think, is it called African-American Studies that AP came out with, that College Board came out with, has unfortunately caused just, in my view, people who don't know enough about what the course would entail to really think about whether kids, whether it should be in your school, your state, anything like that. It's almost like people forgot two things. One, that like, when we study history, we're not looking to shame anybody. We're not looking to assign blame. But what we are doing is saying, if we don't know where we came from, we can't really truly move forward. And we will make the same mistakes again. Speaking about that specific AP course, you know, AP, and I know that's one of the pieces of the strategic plan is to raise enrollment in AP classes. You know, those are college-level courses that kids take in high school for both high school and sometimes college credit. Having taught four different AP classes, they're rigorous, they make kids think. We never sat there and told kids what to think. We, we really challenged them. World history, I'll use this as an example. And I still remember, it's chapter 11 in the book that we used, because it blew kids' minds. The title of the chapter was "The Americas on the Eve of Invasion." I never learned history that way. And so to think about, and again, not asking anybody to agree with it, but getting kids to think about a different perspective than their own and to say, what did it feel like for the peoples? This wasn't a new world, people already lived here, right? And so to think about, what did it feel like to be invaded, not explored? And so something as simple as that, though, unless you really sit with it, can scare the you-know-what out of people. And so, you know, my approach with families was always to say, here's what we're doing and here's why we're doing it, you know? Now, when you think about a whole state and you think about a district, we don't offer any AP classes in Harrison because we're too small. If a student wanted to take an AP class, they're going to have to go through Michigan Virtual to do that, which is a whole nother piece, right, about taking a class online is not for everyone. So there are going to be a lot of local disparities on what can be offered. Do you have someone that's been trained to teach it? And all of those pieces. But I don't think those things block districts and schools who want to teach those things from doing that, whose kids may need to see themselves represented in a way that they've never seen themselves represented. I did a little study at Forest Hills for, when I was in my ADD program, around what was our percentage of non-white kids in our AP classes in Forest Hills? And so, and what we found was that some groups, Asian Indian, were overrepresented based on population in the AP classes, African-American students were underrepresented. We also didn't have any African-American teachers teaching AP. And so that was an issue as well. And so it's, it's complex around those pieces, but also diverse libraries, we need those. And, you know, it's, I didn't invent the mirrors and windows analogy, but that is, kids need to be able to see it to be it. I'm a firm believer in that. And so, and that's the mirror. And then the windows, kids need to be able to see people that don't look like them, that don't worship like them, that don't live like them. Because ultimately, that, we are raising our next generation of leaders. And they have, and they, and they have to be able to interact with each other.
Thank you.
Except, is, I'm the, it's two parts, but we're going to do one at a time. It's equity over equality. They're not the same thing. And so with all the challenges here in Michigan across the gamut. And so with all the challenges here in Michigan across the gamut, we all want to see the light, the proverbial light at the end of the tunnel. And so even fine-tuning the strategic plan for improvement, as, as often plans have, they often, the urban districts still face the deepest inequities in resources, teacher retention, student achievement, et cetera. Do you have a vision on tackling these systematic changes in disenfranchised communities for success, to know, for those, 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 those students versus their counterparts that happen to be in just little well-off districts?
So I would say, and again, another complex issue for sure. Again, I think one of the ways that I think we can think innovatively is to think about private sector partnerships. And the reason I say that is, to get the resources in that one needs, if they can't come through state funding or other pieces, I'll use Forest Hills as an example. There's a foundation, a separate foundation, but, but works, the whole purpose of the foundation is to raise money for things in the district that general fund cannot or should not support. I worked with that foundation when I was Chief Innovation Officer. I sat in meetings, or lunches, rather, where we were looking for seven-figure contributions from individuals to help fund things. And there are a lot, a lot of funding that goes out through things like that. And so I think that's one way to think about in an urban area, about really trying to expand some of those partnerships, to just get some more immediate funding in that might have a little less strings on them, to help kids. I think about the Henry Ford High School that's in the museum, like there's some great programs that exist. And so how do we say, and that's had a lot of private support for it. So how do we continue to build that, especially, and, and I think, starting in some neighborhoods that have been ignored, certainly? I think in fine-tuning the strategic plan, I think, again, we have to be more transparent about the metrics being used to judge those things, so that it's right out there. It's not just that we have a goal of this, but this is what we're going to monitor, and this is how we're going to look at it. I think it's interesting when you talk about urban areas, because again, depending where you are in the state, your opinion is either Detroit drives everything, or not, or the other way around. And so we have to bridge those divides, and that's part of the political world we live in right now. I was just looking at a map recently that showed in 2008, in the presidential election, where people, how people voted in the presidential election in 2008 across our state, and then how they voted, I think the most recent one was 2020, I don't think they've gotten all the details yet from 2024. And the shifts that you see in areas are mind-boggling. Mostly purply in 2008, definitive reds and big splotches of blue in 2020. And unfortunately, that's still driving our school funding and our, and our education conversations, because I think there is this perception of who the typical student in Detroit might be, for example, that isn't based in knowledge or experience, but is just a picture that some people have in their heads. And so, but I do think, for example, Detroit Public Schools is doing, are doing some really interesting things. I just read, I think it was yesterday, that to help conquer absenteeism, they've started a pilot bus route for high school students. I think it's two different buses they're going to run, because typically, they don't transport high school kids. And so they're starting on things like that. Gas isn't cheap, but again, that's a pretty low-level, hanging fruit way to approach some of the issues, to say, can we send two buses out to these two areas and pick up kids and bring them to school? So I think we've got to stop pitting districts against each other. I think we've got to stop pitting big and small, or urban and rural, and just say, we are all in this together. Again, kid can move, and today they're mine and tomorrow they're yours, or they're going to move out of state, right? And that's the one thing we don't want. We've got to stop the brain drain out of Michigan.
So kind of agree, but, so historically and institutionally, because of that.
Mm-hmm.
Urban schools struggle, but on the end of the spectrum, so rural in certain areas, with barriers outside the classroom. So from poverty to hunger, housing deficiencies, technology, there are many variables of limited access to external and sometimes internal resources, or support, that directly impact their learning. And so how would you lead the districts in addressing these inequities so that education gap is reduced through that? Because of, you know, due to those many types of variables.
Absolutely. And I think I touched on this a little bit last week, when I said that housing policy is education policy and all of those pieces. I think we've got to lead in, I'll just use the word bundling, that it's all of those things that we need to look at those communities around. And that's going to take a statewide effort, not just from the Department of Education, but across everything to say, if we want thriving communities in the state of Michigan, and we want students to graduate from here, and even if they go somewhere else for college or trade school or something else, that they come back, it can't just be about education policy. What is the Department of Education going to do here? It has to be about, how are we going to work with people in the housing field and that are the experts and the regulators in housing to say, we have affordable housing? How is it going to be for downtown development? And I'll use that in a big D downtown and a little d downtown. If we can't attract even small businesses to rural areas, for example, who is going to want to live there, right? How are we retaining our educators so that kids aren't seeing a new teacher all of the time? How are we looking at healthcare policy to say, how does that impact everything, right? When you've got kids who have never seen a doctor before when they come to school, or a dentist? When you have families that have no method of transportation other than a city bus, a county transit, or a school bus, because they don't have transportation of their own. And so I'm not being Pollyanna and say, if we invite everybody to the table, we can fix all of the issues. But what I am saying is, I think it's much bigger than education. I think it's about bringing all of the players together and saying, these, we can't sit in silos anymore. If we care about our kids, and we care about our state, and we care about economic development, I mean, if it just has to be about dollars, it completely makes sense to say, it has to be all of those pieces, because I can fix getting the kid to school perhaps. And maybe I get a grant to run a robotics program that changes this one kid's life. It still doesn't address, sometimes decades, of being ignored, or not getting resources to say, or not having a generational history of homeownership, or of other things like that. And so it's so multifaceted to say, we've got to tackle all of these things, and let us lead in the areas we are good at, and then let's lean on other people to lead in the areas that they are good at. And so, and again, that's not easy, but I truly believe, when I said last week that we're at an inflection point, I think that's where the inflection point is, is we've got to stop thinking about it as just education. It's everything. It's everything. Because so much impacts these kids before 8:00 a.m. in the morning, and after 3:00 in the afternoon, that we can't control right now. We have no way to control it. Is there a parent home at night? Or are they working a night, a night shift? You know? And so all of the, all of the things that if that's not your experience, you're not thinking about, so.
Thank you. So a few years ago, four kids were killed in Oxford High School. Some parents have not been too happy about how things have been handled there. One of them is the E O P, Emergency Operating Plan, and whether, you know, they weren't able to see it, or they don't know if it was updated. And so we've kind of been asking here at the table, you know, that I, I think that it's not a big ask, but as, as State Superintendent, would you, and I've got two parts here, would you be willing to make sure that all districts have clear E O Ps that are reasonable and updated regularly for their schools? And then my second, my second issue is, is in the area of government immunity. One of the parents who testified, a parent whose son died, I think rightly identified that a lot of safety issues would be resolved by the insurance companies if they knew they were going to be on the hook for situations, and that government immunity wouldn't necessarily be, they'd be able to hide behind that, the, the schools. And so by at least giving some exceptions in governmental immunity, maybe if a, a student or somebody dies, or is seriously injured at school, or at a school function, this would just force, you know, the, the, the insurance companies wouldn't insure them unless they felt that there was, that was going to be covered, that they would, you know, even without that immunity, there, you know, there would not be those, those instances happening. So I do think it would be a nice systematic way to resolve situations. So would you be open or even supportive of that kind of change to governmental immunity?
Yeah, and so, you know, that's every parent's worst fear, right? Send my kid to school, something catastrophic happens. And frankly, it's every educator's worry every day. Something's going to happen, and I, I may have to make decisions in the spur of the moment, and I hope I make the right one, which is why a good E O P is important, why appropriate training is important, although we can never guarantee, right, that we're 100% secure, safe, because that, that just doesn't exist in our world today. I think the issue around E O Ps, my, you know, my experience is, you know, we pay pretty close attention to making sure we get it, the state, and I can't remember if it's from M D E, or I think it's through the state police, that we get our template. And I know that we've worked closely with our school resource officer to complete that and make sure, it's not, it's not a short document by any stretch of the imagination, it's very lengthy, as it, and again, we're talking about kid safety. It's not an easy lift, especially if you're trying to work on it in isolation. So I think it's super important that people work on that together. So I think, you know, making sure that everybody has one and that they're regularly updated, I might be wrong, but I feel like it's every two years that we have to update. Thank you, I was pretty sure about that. And so it's a great opportunity for us to review what we're doing, and putting those things together. I think the idea, the, the issue about the insurance companies is a little bit more I know recently, two of the families, from what I read in the paper, have agreed to a settlement with the school district, and of course, there's lots of opinions about that. No amount of dollars is ever going to bring back their child, so I can't even begin to imagine the difficult decisions they have to make as a family. I do wonder, because I think a little bit like a lawyer on this, that, you know, is there a standard for the governmental immunity that, that might be a good compromise for all sides? You know, is it gross negligence? Is it, you know, whatever that legal standard might be? Also be honest, it's nothing I've ever really looked at in depth, so I'd be open to looking at it in depth, but I also understand the need to be insured, and what the limits of any one of those policies might be to protect schools from things that they shouldn't be on the hook for. So I never did any insurance law, so I'm not really well-versed there. But I know in other instances around the issue of governmental immunity, there usually are exceptions in different things, like for police or other people, in terms of a certain level of care or lack thereof, that of course, the burden would be on the families to prove. But I think, yeah, it's a tough situation. But I also don't know if, if, if insurance companies holding districts hostage over whether they'll insure them or not is the right way to go either, because we need insurance to be able to operate. And so, so I'm just thinking out loud right now as I process it.
It sounds like you would be open to some kind of additional accountability, so that, you know, so that if they are gross negligence, I think that's the standard now, so we might need to go down to negligence, which is easier to prove.
Yes, it is.
So, you know, it, some kind of change so that we can hold districts more accountable. And then you didn't really answer the E O P.
Sorry.
Would you, as State Superintendent, make sure that, you know, all districts have E O Ps in place, and they're reasonable and updated in a reasonable manner?
Yes, yes, for sure.
So the other one, just, it, it sounds like you're open to whatever it takes to kind of insert some additional accountability to make sure districts are doing what they should be as far as keeping kids safe as best they can.
I think if we could come to an agreement on what an appropriate standard of care would be for accountability, then yes. I also know that, I don't know if I think negligence is the place to go on that, because when you lower that bar from gross negligence to negligence, and again, just thinking like a lawyer, that may be putting too many people on the hook that shouldn't be. So I'm not, I, I can't tell you that I, I believe that that's where the standard should go, but totally willing to look at it and have conversations with people in the law who do this for a living, and with insurance companies, to see what are the unintended consequences that we're not thinking about right now at this table.
Yeah.
Thank you. We will take a five-minute break to stretch, grab a extra water or snack, and we will come right back. come right back.
We will continue on, and I know that Marshall is somewhere right around the corner, so I will go ahead with the next. Oh, there you are.
Those cakes.
They were going fast. Okay, so my next question, you talked a little bit about literacy and you said that you would reference one of the back pages in your presentation. So I'm just talking about PA 146 and PA 147, that you know that the staff in this department worked hard to ensure that we got those laws across the finish line. What are the top three additional policy changes that you would advocate for at the state level to continue to improve early literacy achievement? And let's say just literacy achievement?
I think one of the pieces, and I've reflected on it based on a question that I got last week, I do think we need to have a menu of approved or endorsed, or whatever word you want to use, of the science of reading resources for districts to choose from. And so I don't, again, I would never say it's a one-size-fits-all. I don't think, well, nor should we ever just pick one resource for other reasons. But I do think a menu of choices that would be mandated. I think anytime you mandate, though, we're never fond of the unfunded ones, so to think about what that might be. But to say, here are approved science of reading, research-based resources. If you're already using them, great. If you're not, then I think there has to be a process that we assist with for going about choosing the one that would be the right fit for your district. So I think that's one piece that would be very important. I think then probably in conjunction with that would also be, and I know there's pieces in there now around the dyslexia pieces, but some pieces around training, professional learning, along with those pieces, that if you're going to be a teacher of reading, if you don't already hold certain credentials or certain training, that we want to be able to help, we, we want you to have to get it within a certain amount of time. But again, there has to be funding to back that up, because the districts can't take that on themselves, or most districts cannot take that on themselves. And I think the third piece will be, once we have the dyslexia screening in place, to really make sure we're monitoring it, to see, A, is it achieving what we intended it for to achieve, and are there other things we need to be looking out for? And I would say it's not so much, in my experience in the K3 world, but what do we do if we discover that a child in middle school can't read? And so I think we also have to look at legislation that provides for reading specialists above elementary school. Because I will tell you, as a middle school principal, facing an issue of a child who we discovered could not read, we were at a real loss for what to do in that moment because we were not teachers of reading. The option could not be to send that child back to elementary school to learn how to read. And we sort of stumbled upon it in a very weird way in the beginning of the school year, thankfully, because this young man was really good at asking whether or not he could read, because who wants to say they can't read? Nobody. We all joke that we can't do math. That becomes sort of a line at a party. You don't ever hear anybody joking about that with reading. And so that feeling of shame for older kids, I think we need to do something about getting reading specialists in secondary, so that if we do have a child either that for some reason has come through our own system, not being able to read, or is transferred to us and cannot read, we have to be able to help them.
And just a follow-up. In addition to, thinking about the state of Mississippi, because we're being compared to Mississippi. In addition to the fact that our law has, has not been, these laws have not been fully implemented.
Correct.
What are your thoughts on this comparison of Michigan to Mississippi? I think you've, you've named a few of the differences between Mississippi and Michigan. And thoughts on that, that comparison?
I find it fascinating, because I have friends in education in Alabama, and the joke sort of in Alabama, right or wrong, is, well, at least you don't live in Mississippi. And so, because I think it's fascinating that their educational system is sort of being touted as a top, something we should look at for reading, when historically that has not been the case for lots of reasons. And so whenever we're doing the comparison, especially if we're looking at NAEP, because that tends to be the biggest way that we compare states, because it's the only common piece across. I, I might be one of the only people in the room that has ever proctored a NAEP test. Maybe the only one, I'm not sure. It's the weirdest thing to ask kids to do, not going to lie. I proctored it at high school level. Got these kids, you, you get a list of kids that they want to test at your school, you've been selected to test, you get a list of these kids, you have to get permission from their parents to test them, you bring them in, some of the kids you may have a relationship with, some of the kids you may not have a relationship with, you're trying to explain why they have to take this test. I want to say it was their senior year, but I could be wrong on that. They were very checked out, it was in the spring. What was the incentive for them in that moment, other than me saying, I really need you to do the best you possibly can on this test? But putting that aside, especially now you think about fourth grade reading, which is where we look at and compare the reading pieces and the gains, the gains that Mississippi may be seeing in reading. Are we comparing apples to apples? I don't think we are. I don't think we are. You said it yourself, are, we are not at the same place in the marathon for reading. And so we have to be very careful about making those comparisons. Can we learn things from other states? Absolutely. I hope people learn things from Michigan about how to do things, but we're in very different places. I think sometimes those comparisons come easily. I think rankings, it's easy to say, well, we used to be this and now we're this, and whose fault is it? It is dangerous to ever look at one piece of data on its own. It is dangerous. I want to know, what are their graduation rates? I want to know what is their four-year completion rate to get kids to graduation? I want to know, do they use NWA and how are their kids growing? Where did their kids come in before they took this test that we're all comparing across the country right now? I think it's easy and quick to look at one data point and make comparisons. I don't think it's fair and I think it's dangerous.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
In the first interview, we heard a lot about the need to elevate the teaching profession.
Mm-hmm.
And there are many initiatives currently in place across the state focused on recruiting, preparing, and retaining educators. Tell us which initiatives you would prioritize in your first year as the state superintendent to continue these efforts, and what areas need improvement to achieve lasting success?
So I think one of the things I already talked about is, do we need to incentivize those areas where we have a teaching shortage, whether it be a certificate or a certain area? I think I, in answering one of Dr. Robinson's questions last week, I talked about, like, how do I find a music teacher if none exists in the area, right? So we know that in the arts, that actually at the high school level and industrial arts, it's hard to find a certified teacher sometimes. We know that in special edit is difficult, sometimes in world languages it's difficult. So as we see, and again, sometimes it's just difficult to recruit to your area, it's not that there is a shortage of teachers with that. What I have seen the most success with is the grow your own. And the reason for that is, is because it puts some great decision-making into the local districts to say, here's what we see we need, and we can work with our current staff and say, would you be willing, if we support you in this, to get an additional certification, like a T-SOL certification, or a specific AI piece or something like that, as we project our needs going out? But it also lets you look at, and we've done this with a couple parapros, who are very committed, who are not going to move away from our town, right? They, they've grown up there, their family's been there, but maybe they haven't had all of the opportunities to get a four-year degree yet, for any given reason. The grow your owns really, or they just, they have some college but not, they haven't completed, it really allows you to sort of almost pre-hire your teachers in a way, because you can look at it and you can say, all right, we're going to spend X amount of dollars out of this grant, we have these partnerships with these universities or colleges to allow you to get that work, you're going to stay employed with us while you take those, those courses, you're going to student teach with us as we move forward, and then because we believe in you and we've seen you grow along the way, we're going to have a job for you when you get certified. That kind of two-way loyalty that that breeds with grow your own is pretty amazing. I will say, some of the pieces where there, people are getting certified through non-traditional means, which I'm not against, but here's what I've seen happen with that. If you haven't student taught before you come in with that certification, it is incredibly hard, because they haven't had a master teacher with them in the room as they learn classroom management and all the nuances of teaching that you can't just read a book about. And so the grow your own has been better for us, because it provides that mentorship all along the way for that, for that incoming new teacher. And so, you know, I still am familiar with the Teach for Tomorrow and those other pieces, but I've seen the biggest bang for the buck in the grow your own.
Madam Chair, could I just ask a follow-up? So, so, and that, and that's something that I think the department has really, has really championed.
Mm-hmm.
But what I'm curious is that at times, some of these programs that have shown success have lacked sustained funding or commitment from the legislature, because there are a few different components and, and governance structures that do touch on education. So how would you handle a situation where... So how would you handle a situation where what is clearly, let's say in your mind, a positive program, and supported by evidence, a good pilot, but suddenly gets defunded, or suddenly no longer part of the budget? Doesn't that cause whiplash amongst the districts?
It certainly does. And, you know, we were all worried about that earlier in the year, even with the Grow Your Own funds from the federal government, some of those pieces, because we do know how well they work. And I guess it goes back to also, like, trying to never be in that position, because we're telling our story and we've reclaimed that narrative. And it's about meeting those people who have been positively impacted by, I can tell you that Grow Your Own works. You know what works even better? And I have a specific person in my head from our district. You meet with her, and you hear her story about always wanting to be a teacher, but that just wasn't in the cards for her earlier in her life, right? And so I think we're moved by personal narrative. Sometimes we're not, but I think that's the biggest bang for our buck right there. And how have our kids been impacted by the fact that, you know, Ms. Suzie, who was a parapro for 10 years, is now, you know, Mrs. Smith, the second grade teacher? Because I think those are great examples for our kids, too, you know? That your future is not set in stone, depending on things that happened to you along the way. But those definitely are conundrums. And I think it's also getting your community involved in telling that story. This summer, when our 21st Century grant funding was frozen, and we weren't sure if we could run our after-school programs this fall, well into the beginning of August, you know, we really mobilized our community to make them aware of what was going on. Do you find value in this thing? We need your voices to be heard, you know? And our area is not necessarily a political area where, you know, you'll see a lot of that. But because it was a story that touched them personally, we got people calling to try and make some change. You know, legislators from our area tell us all the time, if we don't hear from you, we assume you agree with what we're doing. Right? We're told that at the legislative breakfasts, we're told that by everybody. We kind of figure no news is good news. Those are my words, not theirs. But if we're not hearing from you, we assume you agree. And so we have to start saying, like, they need to hear from people on the ground. They need to hear from their constituents that these programs are important to them. We can't be the only ones advocating for this. Right, wrong, or indifferent, or weird, or campy, I make videos every week for our community. Sometimes they're pretty nonsense that they're about, like homecoming or something like that. But sometimes they're on big issues, like the difference between getting funding from the state government and the federal government for education, you know? And so I think the different ways in which we communicate to activate our community, it's not about D's, R's, or I's, it's about our kids and what's best for our kids. And so, again, I think it's telling our stories.
Ms. Chairwoman, can I just follow up really shortly? You also mentioned something about, you know, incentivizing even out-of-state teachers to high-s shortage areas, or just any sort of incentivization to high-s shortage areas. I believe they had, our state had been reimbursing some of student loan debt for a certain commitment to those high-s shortage areas for a certain number of years. Is that something you support? What are other ideas that?
Yep, and our district has done that. Sometimes they get approved, sometimes they don't get approved. You know, it's that, kind of that model of a doctor going to serve an underserved area, you know, if you serve for this long, we will, you know, because obviously med school's very, all learning is expensive today. It is also, I will tell you, an incredible amount of paperwork on a small district to put those pieces together, but we do it, to help people with those loan pieces. I think even also, and I'll, again, so, talked about my kids, so I'll go back to that. So my daughter Paige, you know, who, today's her 31st birthday, so, you know, for whom there was some doom and gloom early in her life, she's a psychologist in California now, you know? And they're looking, she and her husband, he's from the Detroit area, they're looking to move back east, especially as they start a family. To, she was a school psychologist first, and now has a private psychologist license. They're looking at Pennsylvania, one, because that's where they met, but also because to transfer her license to Michigan is way more complicated than to transfer her license to Pennsylvania. She completes two years in California, she does some different things, she can transfer that license to Pennsylvania. So we've also got to look at pieces like that for those professional pieces, people. And I know we've done work at the state level around counseling already, but not so much about school psychologists and psychologists. So I think that's another area that we need to look at. And again, you're, when you license somebody, you're saying to the public, you can trust this person, they have all the credentials they need. So I get that, it shouldn't be like the lot of piece of paper. But I think we also have to look at, because we do have a shortage of school psychologists as well in second, there isn't a child psychologist in All Claire County where I live, not one. And so we've got to start incentivizing even people in those professions to come, not just teachers. So I think we need to look at the certification requirements. I will say, kudos to everyone, it has been easier to get an out-of-state teacher certified than it ever has been. And that's been very, very helpful to us. We've hired people from Florida, North Carolina, Colorado, that has been extraordinarily helpful.
Very good.
To me. While students are always at the center of our work in schools, the primary managerial focus for district superintendents is the adults that work in our schools. Teachers, parapros, office staff, other administrators, custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, librarians, and other district staff. Could you describe how you, as state superintendent, would work with MDE staff, district-level personnel across the state, and even peers in other states to build the supports needed for everyone who works in our public schools to not just survive, but thrive?
Sure. Out of Region Four and MASA, I am the, I sit on the professional learning piece to MSA. MASA, excuse me. One of the pieces that our group has been working on is to focus on, on sort of the non-teacher people that are in our organizations, because they're just as vital to us as everyone else, to say, is there learning that we could provide for bus drivers, for parapros? How do we keep them current and keep them at their best in their job, and, most importantly, help them feel valued? Because when kudos are given out, it tends to be for teachers, not that it's not deserved, but that tends to be where we first go. I use the word educators to include everybody, because I do believe they're all educating our kids, no matter what purpose or function they serve in our district. So when I say teachers, I am specifically talking about teachers. But to say, how do we value them? There's been a lot of outsourcing that has happened with those different groups over time, too. Coming into Harrison, that outsourcing had already occurred. We have third-party vendors with bus and custodial, and food, which most people do. And so that can sometimes be a tricky situation, where they're sort of your employees, but they're sort of not your employees. But I think it's giving every one of those adults the respect they deserve. And would there be the possibility to say, and even going back to the Grow Your Own piece, is there a way, again, to tie back to that, to say, you know, teaching is the public-facing thing that we do, right? That's, I mean, we're a learning system. You can't talk about systems without saying you're a learning system. But all of those other pieces contribute to the day, the week, the month, the year that our kids have. Our bus drivers are typically the first and last contact with the school that our kids have every day. When you start up a school year, that's where most of your complaints come from, that's what I've been dealing with for the last week or so. We had to move a lot of bus stops this year, because we went from 13 to 12 routes. Might not sound like a big deal, but when historically in that neighborhood, the bus stop has always been in one specific place, and it's not any longer, that's a huge ripple effect. That's nothing anybody trains you for, to pick up the phone and have a parent start yelling at you because the bus stop got changed. But that's just as important as the conversation I have with the teacher about the diverse literature in the classroom, right? Because we have to be in this together. I think also, that whole idea, we try and recognize everybody in our district for different things, our guiding beliefs, we put out nominations, or opportunities to nominate every month, it includes our vendor employees as well. If you're a custodian doing a great job, you will be recognized just as much as maybe a principal doing a great job, because you have to make people feel valued and part of the team. I say all the time, the job of Team B is to support those in Team A, right? And so everybody behind the scenes is crucial to the well-being of our school, to our district, and to our state.
Thanks.
So next question is on leading the State Department of Education. MDE has over 500 employees, many of which are at least partially funded with federal dollars, leading to a heavy emphasis on compliance and enforcement. How would you lead a team required to enforce state or federal mandates in districts that may be resistant or already overwhelmed and understaffed?
I think it goes, it starts with those relationship building that I talked about during the presentation piece, and about learning where the pain points or the struggles may be for the department. What are the, there's so many strengths in this department, are they being best utilized or leveraged right now? How do we, how do we look at what people are currently doing, thinking about what needs to be done, and is there the possibility of collaboratively coming to some realignment of different job responsibilities? That's why I'm always not overly fond of job descriptions, because I think the moment we put it on paper, we put people in a box sometimes for what they do or they don't do. It may be time, and I don't know if this has been recently done, so if it is, excuse me, but to really think about, what are the strengths that each person has, what are the needs of the RESDs, the RESAs, the ISDs, the districts? What's the best way to meet those? Do we have the capacity right now to meet that with the current staff? If we don't, advocate for more staff? And to also be honest about the situations that we find ourselves in, right? And so to think about leading with clarity, clarity always precedes competence, right? And so we have to be clear of where we are and where we want to be. I was just talking to a fellow superintendent in the back at the break about, sometimes our work feels like we're trying to put a jigsaw puzzle together and somebody took the box top away from us, we can't see the vision. I probably could figure it out, if you gave me enough time, I could probably get most of the pieces to fit. But if I can see the box top, it's a lot quicker to put the jigsaw puzzle together. And so I think it is about providing that vision, and just saying, we might not have the capacity right now, but how do we get there? I don't know if that answers your question, but I think it is leading with that clarity and that honesty.
Thank you.
My Leap is a state agency in Michigan serving our youngest students. How would you promote a coherent statewide vision for early childhood education in support of Goal One of our strategic plan, without infringing on the authority given to My Leap by the governor?
You know, that's a tricky situation for sure, right? And in the power, in the slide deck that I gave you, there, you know, there, it talks a little bit about that encroachment, right, on that constitutional authority and the statutory authority of the MDE. Right now, without the Attorney General willing to weigh in on what you've asked her to weigh in on, it's kind of, really not going to be able to unring that bell. So, but if we think about moving forward to say, we all have the goal of our kids having great early childhood experiences, whether that's through GSRP, whether that's through a Head Start program, in that idea of saying that, where can we come together and work together? Well, and let's be honest, like, these are colleagues that have worked together before the executive order came out, before the employees at MDE became My Leap, right? These are people that have connections and ties to each other. And so to say, here's our shared vision for early childhood, for example. We know that zero to three and three to five are so important in a child's life. We just started preschool this past week, yesterday, we welcomed our preschoolers back, and the blank slates, you know, that they are when they come into us. But I also know that, like, for some of those kids, they've never been read to at home, right? And so I think part of it is also, in conjunction with My Leap, is saying, how do we, how do we support what families are doing in our communities that are getting kids ready for school? Whether that's pre-K, whether that's kindergarten, you're coming into me, or anything. And again, I think that's what I was saying about, it's, we can't sit in that silo, it's all of us pulling that oar in the same way. I've gone to some My Leap things, met some of the staff at different conferences and things like that, have found them to be genuinely caring people about kids, right? If you think about it, they're kind of, wasn't their decision, right? But they're doing the best job they can for our kids right now. And so I think that's where we find the common ground. But I also think it's important to respect and protect the integrity of the MDE, right? Our constitution is pretty clear about what the role of the state board and MDE is in this state, right? It's pretty clear. And so I'm glad you all did the resolution that you did, even if nothing comes of it, because I think you laid down a marker that what you do is important and worthy. And so I think it's important to protect the integrity, but not at the expense of what's best for kids.
Thank you. We've heard a lot about proposed budget changes at the federal level and the push for a roads funding package at the state level. This type of a potential budget tug-of-war could threaten vital educational programs. What's your process for determining what to cut or preserve in this political climate?
Yeah, it's kind of a mess. It's kind of a mess out there right now, maybe the kindest way to describe it in public company. I think it's important to have your priorities straight. I will tell you that at our level in our district, that's what we've done with both the federal and the, with the cuts that were either made to title, or that we hear are coming, or the fact that we don't know what we're dealing with on the state level yet, is that we've prioritized, here are the most important things, and when the money does come, that's where we're going to start, right? So these are the most vital pieces that we have to protect, kind of like, I have to have, nice to have, I could let go of, although it pains you to let go of anything, around those pieces. I think it's also, in my dealings with different legislators, there really is a fundamental misunderstanding of what we do in our schools. There is a fundamental, and I get it if you're not an educator, right? It's like, I don't understand how a neurosurgeon does their job, right? Just because I've seen one doesn't mean I know how to do it. And so, again, I think it's, it's building those relationships. There's a lot on the federal level. I know I've sat on a couple of Zooms with Senator Slotkin, who has done a really great job of helping us all understand impacts and what may be coming. And again, not just in education, but in things that impact education, like healthcare. So I think it's protecting those things that are most vital to kids, knowing that we don't control it, we can hopefully influence it, but we don't control it. And I think that's where those collaborative relationships with the House Majority and Minority Leader, regardless of party, the Senate, same thing, the governor's office, all of those, there has to be two-way communication, and there has to be respect shown both ways in order to have those productive conversations. And it doesn't mean you cede your And it doesn't mean you cede your ground at all, but I think at our heart, we're teachers, and we have to teach people who don't fully understand yet what happens in a school, right? I've heard some of our state legislators say, well, just get back to, just get back to the basics, that's all you have to do. Really, because today, I'm probably doing laundry for somebody, you know? I'm trying to find mental health resources for somebody. For this child, reading and math, that may have to wait. And people don't like that answer, but that's the reality of what's happening on the ground right now. Not every child comes ready for school. Not every child has parents who care. Most do, thankfully, but not all of them. And so there's too many schools right now that are providing social services, because that's who we are, we're going to take care of kids. And so, and if I have to prioritize that child's physical and mental health that day rather than we're going to be doing fractions, that's the reality of the ground. So I also think we need to get more of our legislators into our schools, and not just what I might call a show school, but the real, the real pieces. We've invited our legislators multiple times to come visit our schools. Nobody's been able to take us up on it yet. But again, at my heart, I'm a teacher, and I'm going to continue to teach.
Thank you.
You actually primed up my question. So I'm a behavior health, mental health guy, and so socio-emotional, socioeconomic conditions, and you went right into it, almost switched up my question, but because of behavior wellness, since COVID or the pandemic, it's been highlighted. The pandemic put it on the surface, but it's always been there. And so for me, in communities, certain behaviors were labeled or criminalized and met with negative consequences historically, where in other communities, these behaviors were given diagnosis and treatment. And so the consequences were different, and the outcomes are different. How would you, because you sound like you're passionate about it, champion building a, 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 a network or a coalition to, of behavioral health, wellness, social services within the school system to improve academic achievement?
Absolutely. So I think one of the things, especially as we looked at the 31AA or the 31N funding, is to keep those pieces in place so that we can continue to employ social workers and other behavior specialists to help our kids. We know that that's going to be crucial. And again, got to find them, and then you got to hire them, and you got to keep them, because the reality is, for many of them, working in private practice is going to be more lucrative than working with us. I think it's also, our kids have a high level of anxiety. Like, you and I probably never even contemplated going to school. I think a lot of that has to do with screen time and the comparisons that kids make with each other. So I think a lot of those services also have to go hand-in-hand with some, I know the bill didn't pass this year about the cellphones, but I think that's something we got to take a look at again, is the role of that. But you're right about some of our youngest kids presenting behaviors that our teachers have never seen before. And I think the continued implementation that I think the MDE started, I want to say in 2015 or 2016, around restorative practices, I think more people need trained in that. I think sometimes we react out of anger with a child when that is not the appropriate thing to do. As a principal, I tried to never discipline while I was mad, wasn't always successful, but I was not going to make a good decision in that moment. We have a health-based clinic in our district. We're worried about that funding, but that provides a very big resource to our kids and to our families. From grade six through up, if your parents sign a consent, you can go to the clinic, whether you're having a physical or emotional issue that you need help with. And that fills a big void in our community. Like I said, we don't have any child psychologists or psychiatrists in the area. But we need dedicated, compassionate, social work and counselors who are going to meet kids where they are, and also be able to navigate the juvenile justice system with those families, not for them necessarily, but with them. We have one right now that our prosecutor has charged somebody, and a 12-year-old for something, and I, in all my brain, cannot figure out why this child has been charged for this piece of something that happened at school, not our school, a different school. We've taken this child in school of choice. And so those can be very difficult things for families to negotiate if they've not had those experiences before. Unfortunately, in our justice system, money still rules. And so we need to be looking for those. And we do provide a lot of those social services for our kids. You know, we have community mental health people that come into our schools. We do wraparound services, all of those pieces, where we're trying, under that MTSS thing about whole child, we're really trying to help those children. But it starts with funding. It starts with funding for those people in school and to keep them funded that way. If that funding went away today, I'm not sure I could keep the people that I have in place right now. And that's not good for kids.
Quickly, there are many reasons why parents may feel that the education their kids are getting are not adequate, whether it's the quality, they don't think, or maybe it's bullying or the safety of the, the child, maybe a toxic environment, maybe there's too much politics in the classroom, or maybe the kid just learns differently, and there's just no place within the school or the district. So how important do you feel choice is for families and parents in Michigan?
So I think, you know, our parents do have choices that they make, either amongst and between public schools, assuming there's room at the public school that you want to go to. There's choices to homeschool, there's choices to do online schools. And so our parents are already out there making choices for their children based on those pieces. I think the piece that troubles me a little bit is that, again, I think it goes back to, like, comparing us to Mississippi. When you're comparing a public school to perhaps a more, a different setting, we're not always looking at the same things to compare. My heart goes out to a parent who feels that their child's needs are not capable of being met in their local, their neighborhood public school. I'm glad I never had to face that as a parent, but, you know, that must feel pretty bad to think that I want to help my child, and this, this entity right here is not the place to make that happen. So for those people, I'm glad there are those choices. I sort of have a different feeling on using public dollars sometimes for some of those choices, like part of the past federal legislation about the tax credits that are going to go to families, I think, beginning in 2027, for monies they expend. I think for some of them, I don't have a problem. If your child needs tutoring and it, it needs to happen, that's fine. I do have questions about some of the families that I know have pulled out of our district in our homeschooling. I worry about those kids. I worry about their social-emotional development. I wonder if they're getting a rigorous education, because I don't know that, because there's not always that accountability on the other end. So, but again, for families that need that choice, I am glad that it's there.
Would you advocate for more choice?
I guess it would depend what the choices were. And again, if we're going to use public dollars for private choices, that's a whole nother issue. I do believe public education is a public good. It exists for the public good. And so I don't think there can be blanket, your dollars follow you wherever you go. I would not, never be an advocate for that at all. But I don't know of anyone that I've met, parent-wise, that has felt like their current choices were not enough for them. Maybe I haven't met those parents yet, but I will just say.
Thank you, Dr. Walton. Thank you for helping our students to see their future stories, and thank you for coming before the board. At this time, we allow you to share with us three minutes of closing words.
Just like to say, I've been a native Michigander, never lived anywhere else in my life, proud Michigander, proud of my two public school children who have had very different paths in life, but both successful and happy kids. I think that is, if you ask any parent, what do you want for your child in life, they would say for them to be happy, right? And so, and again, that's just finding our common ground about how do we help kids lean into and live their future stories, whatever that might be. I've made a lot of transitions in my life. I went from the law to teaching. I went from teaching to being instructional coach, and then a chief innovation officer. I took an unfamiliar route. Most people that go into central office don't go back to a school. I said I wanted to be a middle school principal. I went and did that, and then went from principal to being the proud superintendent of Harrison Community Schools. Those transitions were difficult, like making a transition to this job, but I embraced that difficulty, I embraced that challenge, and I embraced those opportunities. Again, I would say my skills are portable. I understand that you would have some questions about my ability to go from a small district to this role, but I would tell you, I think that may be exactly what our state needs right now. I think our state needs to think about things differently, to not follow the same formula of perhaps choosing somebody from a large district. If we want different results, we need to do different things. And so I want to thank you again for having me, for allowing me this opportunity to meet you all and to share my vision with you. And whatever your decision is, I just want it to be the best thing for our kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board, we have about.
Right, whichever clock we're looking at.
Seven minutes here.